Do you all introduce yourselves? Good morning, councillor Joe Watson.
Morning councillor Karen McGowan.
And you'll see a number of other people sitting in the room who are the officers that are working with us this morning. Would you like to introduce yourselves please?
Morning, Samantha Bond, legal adviser to the subcommittee.
Good morning, my name's Jane Gough, I'm from licensing to read the report this morning.
Morning, I'm Claire Cummins from Democratic Services, I'm just taking the minutes this morning.
And we have someone working the wonderful technology, including these microphones. So we just need to remember to press our buttons because my hearing's terrible and the acoustics in this room aren't very good. Right, so we have a fairly straightforward procedure for these hearings. And you'll be pleased to know that at point four of that, it says the solicitor to the committee will outline the procedure. So you don't have to listen to me reading it out. So Sam, could we have the procedure please?
Thank you Chair, I don't know if I'm going to be much better, so well, I'll do my best. Have you had a copy of the papers through? We have got some hard copies extra if you need them and if I lose my way. So the procedure is just right at the back of the pack on page forty-two. So the licensing officer who's Jane this morning will introduce the report. If there are any questions concerning the report, we can raise them then. So that's just if there's anything missing or factually inaccurate, so we can amend it for the record. We haven't got any representatives for responsible authorities present, so we'll just head over to you just to expand on your representation in the report and to add anything else on top of that what you've said there. There'll be an opportunity for questions from members and officers and with the leave of the Chair, the applicant's representative may also have some questions as well. We'll then head over to the applicant to detail the representation, sorry, to detail the application, provide clarification on it and just to respond to any representations made both in the report and already at the hearing today. Again, there'll be an opportunity for questions from members and officers and with the leave of the Chair, from the interested party as well. You'll then be given the opportunity to sum up the application. We'll take the options as detailed in the report from Jane and we'll then go into private session. So members can take legal advice and consider the application. So we'll just ask you to wait outside and then if you want to hang around for a bit, we can invite you back in and tell you the decision or we can email that out to you, whichever is easiest. The decision of the licensing committee will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003 and regulations made under. Anytime during the hearing, members can request legal advice, which can do in open session as we are now, or private where we'll just ask you to pop next door. We'll have a discussion and when you come back in, we'll report the outcome of that advice to you. And I think, oh, we've probably missed the beginning of the procedure, that it's public and that the hearing is recorded and it'll be listed on the Sheffield Council's website. I think it's retained for six, six or seven years that it's held on there, but we are being live webcast as we speak. I think that should be everything, thank you Chair.
Thank you Sam, and the eagle-eyed amongst you will notice I admitted to ask you to introduce yourselves. So please, could you introduce yourselves?
Yeah, my name's Nick Kitchen, I'm just a local resident.
Morning, my name's Alan Ball, I'm from Business Sheffield representing Mr Ullah from Abercyn Diner.
Good morning again, you're both very welcome. So in accordance with the procedure that Sam's just outlined, could we have the report please?
You certainly can. Good morning everyone, thank you for coming this morning. This hearing is to determine an application for a premises licence for Abercyn Diner ninety, thirty-nine to forty-one, the Wicker. The applicants are Abercyn Diner Limited and the licensing service received an application on the twenty-seventh of March twenty-four, a copy of which is at Appendix A of the report if you'd like to see that. So the reasons for referral today is that there's been an unresolved representation from an interesting party, local resident who's here today, Mr Kitchen. Throughout the consultation period, there has been agreed conditions with South Yorkshire Police, which are attached at Appendix C if you wanted to read those. And everyone has been invited as per normal procedure. So I'm just going to scoot through the report to the appeals section. So the appeals section states that the Licensing Act 2003, Section 181 and Schedule 5 makes provision for appeals to be made by the applicant and those making representations against decisions of the licensing authority to the magistrate's court. The recommendations this morning Chair are that members carefully consider representations made and take such steps as the subcommittee consider appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives. I have just omitted a piece out which I meant to add in. In addition to what's in the report, I have been informed by the Health Protection Service that the Abercyn Diner has now received a food registration application. They've already submitted one because I think that was a possibility that they'd not been registered, but we have had confirmation from HPS that that is now the case. That's it, thank you.
Thank you Jane. Have members got any questions regarding the report at all? Does the applicant have any questions on the report? Or the interested parties?
Yeah, sorry, the, in terms of the food hygiene thing, it's my understanding that they haven't actually submitted that before submitting for the late night application. And it was only actually done because I contacted Food Hygiene and asked them why they didn't have a Food Hygiene certificate.
Ah, thank you. Would we normally, obviously we wouldn't licence somewhere without Food Hygiene certificate, would we?
No, we, the Licensing Act legislation is standalone, so we would, they could operate as a food outlet without a licence. It's only if they're food, if they're providing food beyond eleven o'clock at night. So they could still be operating even if they closed at eleven, so that wouldn't be, have any implications on the licence application.
And that has now been received. Thanks to-
Sorry, but isn't it currently operating till twelve o'clock?
It's currently operating till twelve o'clock.
And you said that they couldn't operate after eleven without licence?
Yeah, you only need a licence to serve food between the hours of eleven PM and six AM in the morning. Outside of those hours, it is not licensable, so.
So my point is that the licence, they're currently operating till midnight?
Depends if they're serving hot food and drink after eleven PM, then they'd need the licence. But if it's just, if it's not hot, then.
Currently operating, serving hot food after midnight?
It might not be that the applicant was aware that they needed that. Yeah, please.
Thank you. So my understanding is that there's no food served after eleven PM, but there may be a wrap-up of people that have already been served at them, and it is a sit-in diner as well.
That's, I mean, depending on the outcome of today, that's certainly something we could look into separately, but would be separate to the consideration of this application. So Mr Kitchen, it's over to you to state your concerns to us.
Yeah, I'll start by saying I've got no objection in terms of the business, not use the business. It's just, I'm concerned at the amount of hours that it wants to operate. I think eleven till four in the morning, seven days a week is excessive for what's a highly residential, about to become more residential area. It's on, it borders Stanley Street and Wicker Lane as well as the Wicker itself, which are two of the probably busiest parking areas late at night. I'm concerned about deliveries at that time of night. We already get a lot of taxis and other vehicles that are delivering or collecting food at that sort of time of night. And I worry about another operator doing it for those types of hours. Wouldn't have an objection to them to have late night opening, you know, sort of Friday, Saturday, but I do think seven days a week is a bit much. Stanley Street is already often double and treble parked throughout the day and even into the early evening. And I'm concerned that Wicker Lane itself is only a single line. So I just worry about the amount of traffic that this extra business might break in terms of takeaway services. As I say, not got an objection generally to the business operating. Think it's quite appropriate for them to do it perhaps at a weekend, but I think during the week, I don't think there's a need or a desire for that type of operation to operate there on midnight. In the application I immediately made, that made, that they said that the, their business would be different to others. I can tell you, having taken a look at the menu, it's ninety-five percent the same as the other three, four businesses that it says has got a similar licence. It's got, it's almost a replica menu to two or three of the other takeaways that are down there. So I don't believe it's adding a particularly new service. It's actually taken over a business, premises that was probably slightly different to the other offerings there. As I said, the area is already very densely populated in terms of housing. Within fifty yards of the front door, there are at least four hundred dwellings. There are about to be another possibly seventy dwellings built on Wicker Lane behind it, on the site of the old Coroner's Court. And then where the testing labs was on Nursery Street, there's going to be two hundred plus dwellings. And I'm just concerned about the, you know, the amount of extra noise and traffic it'll bring for local residents.
Thank you, that's helpful. We'll open this up to questions then now. Joe, is there anything you'd like to ask at this stage? Karen, is there anything you'd like to ask?
Just a couple of things. This premise is open now and I know that you're concerned about the traffic. Is it causing any other problems like noise, antisocial behaviour or anything like that? You having anything else from there?
It's difficult to say, being absolutely honest, that this specific business is causing antisocial behaviour. There's certainly an increase in the amount of rubbish that's been dumped in the area and certainly the back of the premises where the bins are etcetera are regularly overflowing. Again, you know, there are other businesses in the area, there is, you know, unfortunately too often rubbish left around the Wicker generally. I would say that this is only going to add to it, but I wouldn't say it's specifically a reason probably to block it. I would say there's been slightly more noise of recently, but I couldn't again, with all, you know, with all honesty, say this was the direct result of this business.
My other question is, this seems quite, and I don't know if there's more of these in Sheffield, so you might be able to tell me Jane. You know, having a premises for, I think when I've read about it, it's about letting, for religion reasons, religious reasons as well as, so there's a space for them to pray and have food. So thinking about late night workers, taxi drivers. So from that point of view, I don't know how much more traffic it would, you know, or antisocial behaviour I'm trying to say. Because that's, when I think of religious dwellings, I don't think of antisocial behaviour. So I was just trying to, do we have other premises in Sheffield that operate like this, that just the food and no alcohol? Is there? Right, okay. So it's not a question then, it's just a-
Has it come back to you Joe?
It has come back to me. So this is a question, actually if I can ask Sam first, because we've been, we've had an objection in terms of traffic and parking and that sort of thing. I'm just thinking in terms of what we ought to be considering and the licensing objectives. Do we need, in order to consider traffic and parking, do we need to, do we need to have a concern about public safety effectively to consider that?
The, the public safety objective is more in terms of the premises themselves, in terms of health and safety guidance and whether the business is operating in accordance with the Health and Safety Act and the other regulations. So while we sort of say with licensing that parking and traffic isn't strictly a consideration as it would be with planning, if there's an increase in vehicles that are causing noise nuisance, then we'd look at the public nuisance objective as it, but I don't think public safety really engage that.
So it's, right, so it's, it's a public nuisance concern with, with additional traffic and parking? And that's, and that's your objection?
Yeah, it's one of them, but also I, it's, it's, it's a strange area because it, people often don't think of it as a residential area. And people make turns specifically into Stanley Street at speed late at night that you wouldn't expect them normally to be driving at. It's supposed to be an area that's sort of twenty to thirty miles per hour speed restriction. I think Stanley's twenty. You see cars bolting on even sort of at lunchtime at forty, fifty miles an hour.
Yes, I mean, I confess, it's my impression of the area is that it's kind of a late night business. You know, looking at the frontages on the Wicker itself, that is certainly my impression of it. But yes, I'm obviously aware that behind that, lots of, there is lots of residences, residences going in.
There's residential areas that you don't realise are there because on Wicker Lane, there's about a dozen premises. Opposite it, where there's a, on Stanley Street itself, there's a building that's up for sale at the moment. That's got four commercial units underneath it and thirty-six residences above it. And that's literally within ten feet from it. If you go the other day beyond Sadaka, like I said, there's North Bank, that's got two hundred premises in it. You've got I Quarter, one hundred and twenty-five, you've got the Exchange Buildings, City Walk where I live, that's fifty plus premises and also what used to be the Riverside Court Hotel, which is about forty, fifty dwellings. On top of that, there are about to be another two hundred plus built beyond Wicker Lane.
Stop me somebody if I'm, if I'm going out of line here, but in cases, I, it's not exactly the same, in cases where we have in more sort of the drinking areas of the city centre, there is more latitude shown to them because they were, how do I put this? Because in many cases, they were there before the residential areas were there. And when somebody builds a lot of homes next to kind of the noisy night time economy areas, then they know what they're doing. Whereas the residential areas, you know, we're, we're a lot stricter in terms of late night noise. Isn't this another case of that? Isn't this another case of this is a, this is a, a late night economy area, but not a drinking area, that, that developers have chosen to build, build homes nearby to?
I would argue it's not been, certainly it's not been a, a drinking area for probably thirty years. I've lived there nineteen and a half years. There's only ever been one pub that recently shut on the Wicker, which was the, God, I can't remember what it was called. Yeah, yeah, the big one. You know, there's always been takeaways there, but there has been a broader range of takeaways. I think the trouble now is that it's very much narrowing on into a one size fits all. It's lots and lots of the same type of menu offering made across the board. My concern specifically, I suppose, with the positioning of this particular takeaway, and it's not the closest to my house, but I'm probably further away than it does, is that that particular street is double parked night and day. It's, it's unsafe to walk down now and I've reported to traffic services previously about it, about the number of illegal parking that goes on there. If you walk down there today at midday, you'd be lucky if you saw a yellow alarm, double yellow alarm, because there'd be cars parked all over it and on the pavement. And there is a, an excessive amount of noise. I think, if I'm honest, I'm not sure what the religious aspect's been brought up for because I, I don't believe that that's particularly pertinent to its application. I don't, you know, I can't see from the outside, I've been in it once to pick up a menu. I've not seen any specific area that it said is, is available to go praying. Although, you know, I, I, I just can't see that. Like I said, I've got no objection to there being another takeaway there. It's just one that's open eighteen hours a day seems a little bit excessive seven days a week. If they want to open on a weekend, fine, no objection with that, you know, I, I understand that. But it's not an area that is full of people in terms of the late night economy. There's the Sadaka Club, they occasionally have functions etcetera. Most of the other stuff are kind of, I don't know whether they're illegal or not, but sort of raves that are down in, in the sort of hatches at the other end of it. There isn't any pubs on the Wicker anymore, which is, you know, I'm a person who likes a late night drink, so it's a shame for me that there isn't. But it worries me more is, is, is kind of like Uber Eats type drivers, delivery drivers just bombing about in the area, not really paying attention.
Thank you. I think you covered most of the things. It's just about the current problems you've got with parking. Is this predominantly people visiting the premises on, on the Wicker? And does it vary at different times of the day? You're saying it'll be busy now, but obviously one of the issues with this is it's going to be open at four o'clock till four o'clock in the morning. So, you know, at that sort of time, are you still getting problems?
It's pretty much night and day. It, it starts, you know, there's, there's at least, I think there's seven or eight hairdressers on the Wicker and the surrounding area. So it starts from people who just park up to get their hair cut and what have you. There's two or three sort of convenience stores, stores in the area. And then this just extends that whole problem out till potentially four in the morning. If you go around, I think is it called Islams, on the other side of the Wicker, there are cars parked up down that street till two in the morning. And there's often your hair owners being sounded because people can't get in to pick the takeaway food up. And then there's a car coming the other way and everybody's double banked in terms of parking. So it causes more chaos. And then all that starts is a horn fest basically from car owners.
And is it much in the way of disturbance from people using the premises? I know traffic's causing a problem and car, car horns at any time of the day are pretty bad. Are the people that are using these premises causing any issues?
I would say it varies. Generally speaking, most people are relatively well behaved. You know, again, being honest about it. You know, we occasionally get some early morning noise when sort of people have been out and probably had too much to drink, grabbed a kebab on the way home and are walking back towards other city centre to pick up a taxi. It does also mean that often taxis wait in that area. So people coming from where, whichever direction they're coming from, will walk towards that area to get a, some late night food and a taxi. Probably worse at a weekend, not as bad midweek. I mean, I would be surprised as a business if there is the amount of business for them midweek to those sorts of hours. And it's just the, the length of time, like I say, seven days a week, that I think will add to it. And it is a very densely populated area. Most of the traffic that goes out under the Wicker arches, so if you was going from the city centre, Ladies Bridge area outwards, it's only taxis and buses that can go that way.
Thank you, that's really helpful. Sam, is there anything you'd like to ask?
That's been really helpful, thank you.
Does the applicant have any questions? It'll be your opportunity to address the concerns and state your case, but do you have any specific questions for Mr Kitchen?
No sir, thank you Chair.
Then it's over to you to detail your application to us and address the concerns which have been expressed.
Thank you Chair. So I'm Alan Ball from Business Sheffield representing the applicant, Mr Imran. In terms of the application, obviously licensing only covers from the eleven o'clock till four AM. So a lot of the areas that have been covered are pre-eleven PM. The applicant has agreed completely to the request of, of the police in terms of conditions on CCTV and the reporting of crime. So CCTV is installed or will be completely installed within the premises and obviously all of those conditions that have been requested will be complied with. I think the other point that's worth noting is that there is no alcohol sold on the premises. This is a particularly religious premise in, in, in terms of the owners, but also a lot of clientele as well. Just to clarify on the prayer area, in the top right-hand area of the seating area, there's, it's about two square metres. On the application, I did put that to scale through licensing, but I think it's about two square metres on a raised platform with prayer mats. So that is used as a, as a prayer area for, for people that come in to, to the premises to partake in food. There are three other restaurants on the Wicker that are open until those hours, namely Kibre, Big Daddy and Imran's. Again, licensing will be able to clarify and confirm that that's the case. And so in terms of the, the question that was raised around the seven days a week, the commerciality reasons for, for a business to be able to kind of retain its staff and employment and be commercially viable and the supply and demand for customers, that's why the requirement is for the seven days. There are kind of people, residents that do partake in, in kind of late night professions, particularly those that work late into the late night economy or working shift work. And also kind of people that live in the area that, 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 that use the facility as well. So it's generally the commercialisation which is why we're asking for seven days in order for it to be viable, for the business to be viable. Bear in mind that the premise that, that was previously there, La Pearl, which, which I do acknowledge from Mr Kitchen, it was, it was a slightly different menu. That business was no longer viable and that, that, that kind of premises remained shut for a while. So obviously we'd like to see a vibrant high street. So I think the fact that the premises has come in to, to, to open up again, I think is a benefit to the community. I think in terms of the parking, I, I, I do question whether or not this one particular premise is going to increase parking in the area. I do think that it's enforcement to, to, to kind of ensure that particularly during the day. But again, I'll go back to, we're talking about after hours. So we're, you know, specifically we're talking around public nuisance from eleven till four. And I, and I think in, in that regard, I don't really see that there's likely to be a significant amount of increased traffic in the area that's going to cause additional nuisance in that. But that's, that's obviously difficult to send to monitor. But again, if we go back to the point that, that the premises are very much going to ensure that the CCTV is monitored, any crime or antisocial behaviour to is monitored and reported. I have also spoken to Mr Ullah and he is full agreement that if we do start to see people parking outside the premises and particularly on the corner of Stanley Street, then, you know, we will be having conversations with clients to kind of move their cars and parking in, in kind of, in, in terms of legal spaces that are available on both Stanley Street and on the Wicker. And I think that will be all that I would have to say, Mr Chair, thank you.
I'll open this up to questions then now. Karen, would you like to start us off?
I just wondered about, there's a concern about deliveries and whether there's any reassurance that there'll be no deliveries between the eleven and four additional slot? Or is, is, is that you can't guarantee that?
I think that would be difficult to, to guarantee because the business will rely on, on deliveries as well. So there are certainly people visiting the premises during the day, but the premises is open for orders and it, and it does take deliveries. So there, there is likely to be. I'd just go back to the previous point made that we would try and ensure that delivery drivers can park legally. And certainly from a noise pollution perspective that we'd be trying to kind of minimise, not, not increase that.
Joe, is there anything you wish to ask? Can I just ask, obviously the licence application has been advertised in the normal way. Has there been any other consultation with local residents? Or would the business, you know, engage with, with local people about the way it's run and any issues?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Yes, and again, I've spoken at, at length with Mr Ullah around the kind of working with the local community. There's been no other objection that we're aware of on the Wicker or from other residents in relation to specifically opening. And we would be open to have, you know, meetings and conversations with residents that, that are concerned. I think if Mr Kitchen specifically has any, you know, issues that arise from this application, if it's successful, then we would be more than happy to engage to try and ensure that we minimise those as we would across the whole community.
He's currently operating up to eleven o'clock or questionably midnight. But how, how long has it been open and have there been any issues so far?
There's been no issues or, or reporting so far. I work quite closely with the community police in the area and in the city centre and we've had no particular issues around that premises of ASB. So in, in, in terms of existing kind of client base, again, because I think of the way that the business is set up and trying to kind of support the community and it has that kind of prayer area, it kind of tends, the clientele that it tends to bring in is from the local community, Muslim community. And therefore it, it tends not to be as diverse as maybe some of the other shops that, that, that kind of burger, traditional burger or kebab kind of shops that would, would maybe kind of bring in other, other people that may be coming from kind of pubs or late night drinking as Mr Kitchen has, has pointed out. So no, we've not had anything to date of any, of any concern.
And then just finally from me, in terms of sort of people sort of eating in or, you know, collecting stuff and, and delivery drivers coming and taking stuff with, what sort of split of business is it? How, how much is deliveries?
That's a, that's a good point, Chair. It's a higher proportion of sitting. And I, and I think that, again, that was where the premises were set up to be, that it was there as part of that kind of community hub. So that people can go in and visit and sit down and eat. So the proportional split at the moment is very much in favour of people sitting in, eating as opposed to takeaway.
Thank you. Sam, is there anything you'd like to ask the applicant? Mr Kitchen, is there anything you'd like to ask the applicant?
Yeah, I, I have to say, I don't recognise some of the statements that have been made in terms of links to the local community. And it's talked specifically about Muslims. When I've been by Muslim people of faith, I don't really see that particularly as a business. I do see late night sort of, you know, people have been out for a drink, making noise, going into that type of diner. I mean, it's a matter of taste, but it's a very, very extremely well lit, bright building. I, I would also say that in terms of some of the things that have been said about, you know, fitting in with the local community, it sticks out like a Belisha beacon in terms of its lighting. That, that's taste and it's people's choice. Some people might want to do that to advertise the business, but it, it's significantly brighter than I would have said any of the other premises on, on the spot. Like I say, I don't see the same, so to me, there are just lots of people who go for a late night takeaway that go there after having drinks etcetera. There is existing problem- There is existing problems to park, and I think specifically the problem is the positioning of this business because of it's Stanley Street, the Wicker and Wicker Lane, because they're all very narrow, heavily used roads. But that's all I would say.
Unless you wish, I mean, there's more of a statement than a question, but we tend to let these things pass, so it's actually then back to the applicant to sum up, is there anything else you would like to tell us?
No, Mr Chair, I think we do acknowledge and take on board Mr Kitchen's points made. We are prepared and will be continued to be prepared to work with the community to make sure that we don't cause nuisance. Compliance with the police request for safety and security around CCTV will be completely complied with. And I think we just want to be a commercial business that's viable, offering a service to the community, and we'll work with the community.
Thank you. Could we have the options then, please, Jane?
You certainly can, okay. The options available to the committee today are to grant the premises licence in terms requested, to grant the premises licence with conditions, or to reject the whole or part of the application.
Thank you, Jane. Could I now ask you to leave with the licensing officer while we take legal advice and come to a decision? And as soon as we've made that decision, we'll invite you back in and tell you what it is. Thank you very much both for your time and your representations this morning. The decision of the licensing subcommittee is to grant the licence as applied for. That's not to say we don't recognise that you've got very real problems there, and one of the things that we're going to do from this meeting is ask parking services to come and see what on earth they can do to help alleviate that, but we can't attribute those problems or the extent of those problems to this business. And of course, the other thing with licensing is, we're evidence based, the business isn't open till four o'clock in the morning at the moment, so there's no evidence that it is causing any sort of nuisance to people. However, if, when it does open till those hours, it does start to cause nuisance that can be directly attributed to that business, then you can come back to the licensing committee and we can have another look at the licence. I hope that won't be necessary, and I hope that the communication between the business and residents picks up and that it doesn't add in and say, the real problems you've got are not necessarily the responsibility of licensing, but somebody needs to do something, and as a start, we will request parking services to go down there. And even if they just start issuing a few tickets, words gets round, and it sometimes has a detrimental effect, but we'll see. But the decision today is to grant, which I believe is subject to appeal, Sam, and Sam will detail your rights of appeal.
I'll give it a go. Following the hearing, you'll receive a notice from the licensing officer detailing the evidence that members considered, how they came to the decision. So should you wish to appeal that decision, it's within twenty one days to the Sheffield Magistrates Court. Basically, what they'll do is sit exactly as members have done today, look at all the evidence before them at that time and come to a decision as to whether the member's decision was correct in light of that. But as the Chair said, hopefully, you know, you're able to work together and that the business doesn't cause any additional problems. The committee are very persuasive in getting other services to act on concerns, so like the Chair said, it will be referred to parking services. Hopefully, action can pick up from that perspective and things get a little bit better for you, but appreciate both of you coming today, thank you.